All right, Sean Wadsworth, Chair of the Albany Planning Board, calling the CIP meeting to order at 5:32. And, CIP. Sorry, we don't have the big screen, we're in here, but you all were emailing the spreadsheet, so hopefully you have some idea of the things you want to contribute to as far as the discussion, but I'm just going to go from top to bottom on our existing CIP spreadsheet, I'm glad to share it if anyone needs to see it. And then if there's anything that needs to be added, or anyone wants to add that's not already in, then we'll just open that up. So, starting at the top, it's Chapel Capital Reserve Fund, so has a gross capital cost of $50,000 and a current balance of about $24,500, and past years, we've been contributing $1,000 per year. So, just like to open the Chapel Capital Reserve Fund up for discussion, should it continue to be $1,000 a year, increase, decrease, are there issues with the chapel?
I think you got this one, Rick, I mean, Jim?
Sure. At this point, I think we should leave it where it is, and then revisit it next year once we get more information and...
Yeah, we've got a committee formed now, and they're just getting going. There is going to be a lot of work.
That needs to be done on the structure of the building, the roof?
Not so much the structure, I think, I think the steeple needs a lot of attention.
The steeple needs the re-shingling of the roof, which is like $7,000, but the rest of it, structurally, the building is, structurally, the building is 99 percent. There's a spot on the floor that we need to get underneath there and see what's going on, and why the floor is so springy, but that's a matter of getting under the building, which we have not done yet, so, but the rest of the building...
We also got to determine what we're going to do with that building, what we're going to use it for. You know, do we need more office space, do we need more meeting room space, I mean...
Well, that's not much for me.
Do we tear it down, do we tear it down and make a parking lot out of it?
So, we want to keep it at the thousand for another year?
That was my thought.
And then, whatever it comes to, we get a warrant on it to do the warrant article? Sorry, I'm on...
Yeah, it's too early to tell what we're going to need for fracture. I mean, I think the goal originally of $50,000 was...
How are we going to plan to do it, though, in this year, in an upcoming year?
The only thing that really needs to be done right away is the roofing on the steeple.
And what's the difference?
Take the steeple off it, or fix the roof, one or the other. It's going to start causing damage.
Yeah, it's going to be a shingle. Get an energy up there, the asphalt shingles.
But there's enough money in there right now to do that. I think we got an estimate, what, of $7,000?
Twenty-five years.
So, it all depends on if we want to do something, I mean, there's, what, $24,000 in there?
Yeah, right now, yeah.
So, I mean, if you want to do a $10,000 contingency for the roofing repairs, right?
Well, we could add that as a warrant article to expend.
To leave the CIP the same, and then...
You know, just leave the CIP the same.
Okay. No, then add it to historical warrant, and to raise and appropriate the $10,000 to fix the roof.
What others left.
But not, but not bring it out of this balance.
Isn't that the opposite of what the whole point of CIP is? Isn't the point of CIP to spread the costs out over seven years, as opposed to having to do warrant articles?
Well, what I was saying is, we can leave this the way it is, when the selectmen meet to put together their warrant articles for the upcoming town meeting, okay, we can elect to spend the $7,000, $8,000 to fix the roof.
Out of that fund.
And we can take it, withdraw it from that fund, or we can withdraw it from the General Reserve. We didn't take anything out of the General Reserve this year to reduce taxes any further in anticipating some expenses coming up, so, there's an option, but that's a selectman decision when we're putting that into warrant articles.
And you guys at the, at the town meeting would just say, "It's not coming out of current taxation, it's just past balances."
Okay.
You know, I mean, if people want, you can add money to this fund, I mean, we're going to need it eventually, if we're going to do something with that building. I mean, I think, this coming year, I think we ought to concentrate on getting rid of the contents.
Well, I think, what Sean's alluded to is that, that's what we've been putting the money there for, is to do the repair.
Right.
Not find more money and do the repair, but to use the existing money in the CIP to perform the repair, which I agree with. So, my thought is, use, do the thousand, and then we'll get an estimate on what it's going to take to do it, and if it exceeds the number there, then we do a warrant to capture the rest of the money. If that makes sense. So, we'll leave it at the thousand, just to keep, just to get a thousand.
Yeah, we, I mean, I think...
Because we don't know the real number yet.
For?
For the total repair.
Oh, yeah.
I can't imagine that's...
Yeah, I can't imagine...
Didn't John Segalsky look at it?
John Segalsky was down here, we didn't go underneath the building, his initial thought was, there's probably a post, there's probably a post underneath that floor in certain spots, and one of them has probably failed, so, I mean, you speculate, throw numbers at it, but it would not be $50,000, you know, it's, to fix that floor, there's no way near that, it's a...
And at some point, someone needs to go in there and figure out what we want to save as the historical stuff for the town.
Well, that's what they're working on right now. We've had, we've had meetings with the Conway Historical Society, they're interested in some of this stuff.
But we don't want to give everything to Conway.
No, 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 no. I think, we need to go through it and sort what the town should retain for historical purposes, but there is a lot of stuff in there.
But once you give it to Conway, there's no...
Well, there's, there's...
Conway knows exactly what Conway wants to do.
Yeah, there's Conway that was interested in some stuff, there's the Conway Library Separate is interested in some stuff, and Russell Colbath House. There was thought that there's some stuff that actually was, what's her first name, Colbath, Ruth Colbath, maybe?
Mrs. Colbath.
Miss Colbath.
That covers it.
Yeah, there's some stuff that should go up there into that building, which makes perfect sense to me, you know, so, but there's a lot of stuff, and, yeah.
We have the drilling committee on it.
There's a few of them on there, yeah.
Yeah, but there's some, I mean, there's stuff from my grandfather in the 30s in there.
Right.
You know, so, there's stuff we don't want to just chalk.
Let it down, let it down, yeah. And I think, we'll come up with, the committee will come up with some ideas, and then it'll all be discussed and voted on.
Okay, we're back to the thousand?
Yeah, thousand.
Thousand. Thousand, sold.
Yeah, move along.
So, next is Town Hall Property Capital Reserve Fund, a target gross capital cost of $30,000, and a current balance of about $6,000, with $6,000 per year allocated, open for discussion. Town Hall Property Capital Reserve Fund, $6,000 a year with a balance of $6,000.
Are we doing the parking lot this year, this coming year?
I mean, that was talked about by, I mean, I know Kelly was, asked us for some pricing on what we would do, but if we were to do that, it'd be a lot more than $6,000. So, I mean, theoretically, you could, you could pull some out of the municipal budget, if that's what everybody wanted to do, and then pull some out of that, I don't know.
Ballpark, what would you say it was?
I don't know, I mean, the weird thing about this parking lot is, it's, the pavement's right up against the siding of the wall, so if you want to repave it, you have to take the pavement out, and like, re-gravel it, and then, like, start over.
Okay, so, do you want to pull it out from right up the side?
You're going to have to kind of...
Okay, so, you know, if you figure that in...
So, it's like $45,000 bucks.
Oh, so, $45,000 just for the asphalt?
Well, to do the whole thing.
Okay, so...
That's like, just an estimate, it might be a little less.
And we're good, and we're good for another couple of years.
We'd be good for 20 years.
Yeah, but right now, we're good for another couple of years.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so... But keep in mind, at the same time, we need to deal with the septic system that we think is underneath the parking lot, we should probably, at that point, at least have it pumped and put in a, some kind of an access. If we're going to pave, probably put a manhole or, or something in there to...
Did any, has anybody found a well yet?
Huh?
Has anybody found a wellhead yet?
Well, that's up behind you.
Well, I know where it is, roughly.
But, what are you starting with, the septic tanks never been pumped yet?
Right.
So, 40, 35 years?
Well, wait, if it's 35 years, they told the state says it's going to fail after 20, so if it's good for 35, then mine's still good, right?
Yours is still good, you just have a, you have to have a plan just in case.
So, these sound like big numbers, and we only have a balance of $6,000 with a contribution of $6,000, so, do you want to up the contribution?
I, no, I'd say go as we're going, and like you said, we can pull from somewhere else if we had to.
Parking lot, and I'm leaving that up to you, when you say it's time, it's time. I always said that because we had the...
You know, the, promo, that type of cap expenditure stuff for the town, I would think you'd want to throw it in front of the town to make them vote on it.
I agree.
No, that's the way I would...
You know, and like, but to pay for it in the current, I mean, because it's, is it a, do we have to have it? No, absolutely not.
Well...
I mean, I fixed the hill, we patched it.
No, the parking lot itself is fine, it's, if we have a problem and a backup of storage...
Yeah, that, I think we can find that.
But then again, that's a matter of digging up a portion of the corner over there, which, where we think it is, and dealing with it.
So, that's a $5,000 or $6,000 thing.
So, is the capital reserve now just for anything that might come up?
Capital reserve, capital is, is looking out five to six years for major expenses that you save for.
But nothing, but nothing we have, car bill, and something that might come up, so it's, the savings account, essentially.
Exactly.
So, I think I can go on the way we're going.
And the CIP committee is only a recommendation, the Select Board has the authority next week to change things if necessary. This is where it gets hatched out.
So, continue as we go with the six?
At least, yeah.
Another year? Are there heating systems, are there roof...
Yeah, we did, the heating system has been done, the roof has been re...
It hasn't been done yet.
Oh, it hasn't?
No, no, probably won't get done till spring.
But if you get into the septic, whether it needs a septic, yeah?
Is the roof already allocated, money's already allocated for it? Do we have an estimate?
Yeah, we have an estimate of $3,000 to re-screw the whole roof.
Okay.
We have that money.
And we have that money.
Okay.
And to fix, like, this is a two bathroom, one sink system, so if the septic did fail here, it's a pretty easy fix.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it's a big deal.
Yeah, I mean...
It's something that could happen at any time.
Yeah, but the state, like, so if you're repairing a failing system, there's certain protocol you go through, so, and it's...
If the lead field fails, where's, number one, where's the lead field, is that where the mulch is?
Right over here, it's right at the corner, yeah.
Okay, and then...
And the tank cover is probably right under the pavement, right?
Well, we, we...
Metal is intact, we can...
We found pictures when Jim and I were in the chapel.
Oh, yeah, right.
We found pictures in there of, of them digging things up, and we think it's over in the corner.
Yeah, no, it is over there, that's what a vent is. But my, my whole thing is, you might want to talk to Dave, because the state's come out with a bunch of new regulations, that's all I'm saying, and it could be a hell of a lot more than that, so...
I think the state would just have to get over it.
I think so, too.
I mean, you know, I mean, the state sits on their hands when people's septic systems are failing and dripping into, you know, rivers, and, and so if our little septic system fails here, and we need to do emergency fix, they're going to come up here, and they're going to bless what we do, and I'm not worried about it. It's, it's, it's different than new one, I mean, there's two bathrooms here and a sink, and it's, there's a reason why it hasn't, it hasn't been pumped in 30 years and it hasn't failed. We're sitting on a granular sandbank.
Sure, no, no, I understand.
I mean, it's, I am not worried, there's a lot of things I'll worry about, Joe, than that, but I, I hear what you're saying, because I know how noxious they can all be, but it, I don't think it's something that the town halls...
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing the selectmen have, have talked about is the fact that if we're going to do the parking area, we, we need to make provisions so we can access the...
Yeah, put a riser in, have a steel, steel top that says sewage.
Exactly.
I agree, I'm sorry, I agree, I'm sorry.
Well, we're still not talking a ton of money to do that.
No, no.
Leave it? Okay?
I'd leave it, but it's a bore, it's a select board's decision anyway, so, but I'd leave it at six.
Give us your advice, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah, that's my advice, I wouldn't worry about it, as far as I haven't been started. We'll worry about Joe's house.
Got a capital reserve for my house.
Yeah, get a capital...
Go a little bit. Did you put that line out of any of you?
Joe's house. All right, sold at $6,000 a year, keeping it as it is. All right, public safety, the Emergency Management Expendable Capital Reserve Fund, a gross cost of $6,100, a balance of $5,100, and a yearly contribution of $1,000. So, this year's contribution would get us to the target gross capital cost, don't know where that number came from, but that's the number we have, $6,100. Open for discussion, Emergency Management Expendable Capital Reserve.
I think the target should be increased probably to $10,000, but I wouldn't put any more than $1,000 a year into it. You never know when you're going to have an emergency.
Yeah.
And you never know how much it's going to cost, and that should be an expendable fund.
Oh, it is, yeah.
With a three-quarter vote in the Select Board to expend for emergencies.
Do we know if it is?
It says, it says it is.
I don't know.
It says it is, yeah.
It is.
Emergency Management Expendable Capital Reserve Fund, number nine says, "Funding for equipment, equipping the town, emergency shelter with basic supplies and operation emergency shelter." Kind of catches me off guard that this is a shelter, and I don't know that there's anything here to accommodate that.
We'll send out the pizza.
Yeah. There's a roof and there's a heating system and a toilet.
It's all about the generator, I think, and that's why we have it.
Yeah, we've got that with a grant.
I would be, you guys have a nice...
What's that?
I'll be home. You guys have a good time. Just carry yourself.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I don't think there'll be anybody here, I think anybody will be home. We have to have it, it's part of the, the North Country...
Well, the emergency management thing that we do every five years, that's nonsense, that we spend a lot of money on, we should be putting that into an emergency fund.
We have to do it to be eligible for the federal funding, and it's a total bunch of baloney, but we have to do it, so we all put all the time in it.
Tell us how you really feel.
Well, I mean, no one's going to run to the town hall if there's some, you know, it's going to be very unlikely, but we have to do it, so we're eligible for the funds, so we have to sit with it.
It's, it would be a flooding situation, probably, and it would probably be a power outage for long periods of time in the wintertime for heat.
Yeah, so it's good to do it.
Those would be, those would be the incidents, I think, that would require the use of this building for its purpose as an emergency shelter.
Yeah, and we're all set up for it, we've spent time on that council, we've done all that paperwork, it's all submitted to the feds, we have the generator backup, we have everything we need to do.
Yeah.
So, it's good, and if three people use it, it's all worth it.
You know, the, the thing is, if you've got people in here, you've got to feed them, you know, you've got to provide them with some blankets or whatever.
No, it's all...
And $10,000 don't go a long way when it comes to that over a period of time. So, I would increase the target to, say, $10,000 from 61, but just put in the $1,000 that we've been putting in.
Okay.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Sold. Target of $10,000, keep the annual contribution at $1,000 per year. Next, Highway Department, the Highway Expendable Trust Fund, has a target of 1.3 million, has a balance of $107,000 approximately. Again, I don't know quite what the 1.3 million target comes from, and, but here we are with a balance of 107. Annual contribution of $60,000 per year. So, we're at a balance of 107 with an annual contribution of 60. Open for discussion.
I think you could, if, if the flap isn't going to happen, which doesn't look like it's going to happen...
It's gone.
I would reduce the goal to, what, half a million dollars, maybe?
Yeah, I would put it to $500,000.
You know, I mean, and I would still contribute, what are we contributing on an annual basis?
$60,000.
How much?
$60,000.
60?
Absolutely.
The flap was for the bridge?
No, it was for the narrows, for the...
We were trying to get the scenic byways grant, to rebuild all the narrows out through there.
Okay, well, we still have an issue with that portion of the road.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess so, but...
So, why...
It's no issue that it's different than it has been for 50 years.
We'll keep patching it.
Good.
I mean, yeah, like, we've, like, it's like the, you know, you were on the board for years, I mean, it's the old Carriage Road that they, they logged over, and it kind of made it subtle, oh, we fixed and fixed, and we've just patched it in again, it's holding up okay right now. Every, every once in a while, it just settles a little.
Sure, charge a national forest.
We can...
We tried that.
Those are my friends in the federal government, but they don't want to pay, so, you know.
I'm from the federal government, and I'm here to help.
Port of a toll, yeah.
The nine most dangerous words.
That's what the flap grant was all about.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we went through a lot with, with that, and they claimed they couldn't fix it without closing the road for months on end.
Right, we can't close the road.
And we can't close the road.
I grew up on that road, and it's the same as, it's been for...
There is, there is a logging road that they could use, they'd have to improve it to get around it so that people could get through, but they didn't want to do that.
So, future boards should know that if they're going to do a big cut on that end of that pass Conway Road, they need to access that cut through the High Street access point, which is up past the old Feshet Pit.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
And you go up through there, and it's a tough hog, and no longer wants to log wood uphill, but that's what they need to do, then they can haul all the wood out of High Street, which is a dirt road, and that would be way better for the town hall.
And they've got to come up by Jeff's new house.
Right.
It's going to go a little bit.
All right, so we're going to drop it to half a million?
Yeah, drop it.
Yeah, 60?
Yeah, I think it will be.
So...
Okay, reduce the gross capital cost to half a million, keep the annual contribution at $60,000.
And that's an expendable?
Highway Expendable Trust Fund.
Yeah, we wanted that expendable because the flap grant, we didn't know when it would come through, and also for emergencies.
Yeah, and there's also, one of the side notes is, it's flap grant and/or red list bridge grant funding, since it's expendable, could be used for that.
I thought there was a separate for, well, there was a separate for the Drake?
There is, that's the next thing, but the, the side note has that as highway expendable could be used to fund grant.
It could be used for any road.
Could be used for anything, have a new road.
Back to the chapel, did we want to turn that into an expendable? I mean, I got, I got quotes to do the roof, and, great, our hands are tied till March to get that done.
Well, put a, put a recommendation in to make that expendable, it would be the Select Board that would vote to put it on the warrant, because it would have to go before town meeting to get it changed to an expendable trust fund.
Yeah, so I'd like to recommend making that an expendable.
And what's the reason for making it expendable?
Well, just, like, we want to get the, the roof done.
Yeah.
Kind of had it all lined up, but I couldn't do both projects at the same time.
Yeah.
So, it was going to end up costing us more money, so now I've got to wait till March to get the town to vote, to get the steeple taken care of, so it doesn't leak.
So, as it is right now, it's a capital reserve fund, so what is the process for spending that money?
Town vote.
Town vote.
Town vote.
Yeah, so...
Right, has, anything that's not expendable has to go back to the town meeting, ties our hands until March, unless we have a special meeting.
This means we save the money, but the town, that, that town meeting is the one that says we can spend it.
If you make it, if they allow you to make it an expendable fund, that is a vote of the Select Board, has to be unanimously won.
The main reason for wanting to change it is because we've got a committee, and we want to move forward with some things.
Yeah.
Nothing huge, of course, it would all be, all be small, small decisions, nothing big or big yet.
Well, the, the other way of doing that would be to get concrete prices for doing it, and putting a warrant article in to expend out of that fund at town meeting.
Right.
And that doesn't have to be done tonight, that could be done at a, when the selectmen get together and put together the warrants, the warrant articles.
My last question on that is, if it's expendable, it says Chapel Capital Reserve Fund, so if it became Chapel Expendable Capital Reserve Fund, can the Select Board choose to use that money for really anything?
No, only for the chapel.
Only chapel?
Only for the chapel.
And I don't know, is there a way to...
I would think that should be brought up at a selectman's meeting, and we decide that at that point, because we'd have to vote to put it on an article for the warrant.
To turn it over.
I'd be all for it, though.
To turn it in.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'd be all for it, though, make it expendable.
Oh, yeah, no, I don't think you'll get any objection.
Cut out the layer of bureaucracy with it.
Okay, so we have a recommendation from the CIP Board to make Chapel Capital Reserve Fund Chapel Capital Expendable Reserve Fund.
Don't, don't make it expendable there, that has to be voted on at town meeting.
No, yeah, just a recommendation to...
Just a recommendation, yeah.
All right, so, Highway Expendable Trust Fund, set a target of half a million, and keep the annual contribution at $60,000, going along the score. All right, next is Drake Hill Road Bridge Expendable Capital Reserve Fund, a target of $754,000, and a current balance of 110, and an annual contribution of $8,000. Discussion.
I mean, I think that, however, however it works, just get thrown in to the Highway Cap Fund.
At this point, there's, there's no, there's nothing in sight coming down the road. They don't even have any money at the state for funds.
All right, so the state's got...
And what that is, what is it, a 75, 25 percent?
I think it's an 80/20, but that whole program has been scrapped, so I don't know why we wouldn't just put that 100 and whatever, $109,000...
Into the highway.
Into the highway fund.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that.
And then the boards just know that, look, that, that money is for the future, we need to just have some sort of game plan.
Well, you're going, you're going to need a game plan for the Drake Hill Road, for the bridge.
Yeah, we're going to need a game plan, I mean, it's a red list bridge, we have two red list, red listed bridges in the state.
I think we should keep the money separate so that you know, so it doesn't get lost.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, to me, I don't, whatever, but I mean, whoever is the board just needs to know that we need to keep some money allocated to that, I mean, most boards will.
Yeah, but didn't you, didn't you have a note on the Highway Fund for bridges, too?
Yeah, the Highway has a note that the cash flow funds for flap grant project and red list bridge grant funding, so it could be used for cash flow for either. Uh, the Drake Hill.
Well, that covers it.
Road Bridge Expendable has a note of the twenty percent, eighty percent thing, which is.
But that's specifically for that bridge.
That's the fund, right.
And we think the money's needed for that bridge is nowhere near what, correct?
I don't think the whole.
What's that?
No, it's like what we talked about at the, that selectman's meeting that you attended, you know, is there some band-aids that we could take to preserve the bridge? A little bit longer?
Yeah.
You know, and what would it cost to something like that?
So that.
But that could be covered under the, under the highway.
I mean, the backdrop to that whole thing was, is that the state identified it as a red listed bridge, at that time, it was probably fifteen years ago, at that time, there was a program that you get in line and you have to come up with the twenty percent within the year of it being, the funds being available, so that's why we started doing it. Then they scrapped the program, so I would, I would just put it in the capital reserve.
I would do that too.
And then just know that, look, this is a liability that we have, we're gonna look at it this summer and see how we're doing and see what our real liability is, I don't think it's, I don't think it's as, um, I mean, the, the value of it right now is way higher because we were going for a whole new bridge, because that's what the state had asked us for. So, but if the state's not gonna help us with it, then we have to live in a different world without the state's help, and I think we can do some other things.
If we can, you know, put some patches on it to preserve it and make it last a little bit longer, uh, that would be something I certainly would.
I think we can.
Yeah.
But the state initiated that by the, the letters and letters and letters and stuff, so.
So it's expendable and it's.
Yeah, but it's expendable specifically for Drake Hill. Matching.
So here's this, the balance is, you know, just under a hundred and ten thousand, the, so the patchwork or the, whatever's gonna be done to make it a successful bridge for some years going forward, is that amount anywhere?
What is the title exactly of the highway fund?
Of the highway fund?
Yeah.
Highway Expendable Trust Fund. That's it.
How about we get the town meeting to, to vote to change that to the highway and bridge expendable trust fund?
So, but you just don't know, you said, said something, we can't spend the money unless we get the matching grant.
Right, that's the way that's set up.
So it's gonna sit there for no reason, no how, can't be touched.
I think that's what Curtis and I are getting, yeah.
That's how these things play.
Exactly.
We can't touch it and we're not, it serves us no purpose.
And I don't believe we could take it and do patchwork using.
Well, that's what I'm saying, without the matching grant, the, our, the money doesn't exist.
That I didn't understand.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, that I didn't understand.
Yeah, so we would have to use, we have forty-six thousand dollars in a bridge grant fund right now that's not in the CIP that's specifically, that can roll over year after year after year, that we can use for bridges, that's all we really have allocated from the state grant program right now that we can use outside of the cap highway reserve fund in my, in the normal highway budget. So we have the forty-five, so this hundred and nine is sitting kinda in purgatory, so.
So I, I'm surprised at this too, what I'm hearing is it can't be used unless we get a state grant?
Right, that's what it was.
Or a federal, a federal.
That's what it was specifically set up.
That's the government.
And that's strictly because there's this note here saying that?
Then why don't we take that note out so that we can use the money, make a recommendation that we take the note out so that we can use the money on those bridges?
I just put it in the, the highway.
Well, no, what I would, what I would recommend doing is changing the title of the highway grant and get the town meeting to vote on it, to add bridges to it. Highway and bridges, all in one.
With the capital highway reserve fund?
Yeah.
Well, that does, with the capital highway reserve fund, does reference red list bridges, doesn't it?
Only in the notes, not in the title, I'm just saying the title. And, and then turn around and, and get another warrant article to take the money in the Drake Hill Road Bridge, the hundred and nine thousand, okay? And incorporate it in the new, the new fund. And that kinda covers it.
So we recommend that and then the selectmen does it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And the select board's the one that's gonna vote that, right?
Don't, don't recommend.
Well, yeah.
Well, no, don't recommend, I don't.
Whatever, I mean, yeah, this makes more sense.
But the select board, I mean, this is a recommending committee, so the select board's the one that are gonna vote on who won it or not, right?
Yes.
So if, if that bridge caputs tomorrow, we can't even use that money to do a patch.
Right now, no, unless the state comes and says, well, we need a contribution from you. So, yeah. Now, if that program was still in place, that Curtis was referencing, that's a different story, but it's not even in, in play right now.
But we did, but the town did specifically create that account for that bridge.
Absolutely.
So I think personally, that we ought to take that money and put it towards that bridge, we know it's gonna need to work and not incorporate it with making an expendable Drake Hill Expendable Trust Fund for the bridge, for the bridge. But that's my two cents.
My recommendation would be to change it from just highways, highways and bridges and have another warrant article to take the money out of the bridge fund and put it in there.
Yeah, I mean.
That's the recommendation.
If it, if the bridge fails, ultimately, the selectmen are obviously gonna have to figure out, I mean, the selectmen and the road agent have to figure out a way to fix the bridge.
Sure.
Right, so like, the way we are right now, it is, we don't have the hundred and nine thousand dollars, so if you wanna make it so, I mean, I guess it's all about trust in the select board, I, I'm fine with whatever, with them having the authority to allocate it and move forward and knowing and maybe put it in the notes that this came out of that, but if we wanna do a special fund, I get what you're saying too.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
That's, you guys can talk about that.
I mean, the other thing to consider too is a hundred and nine thousand dollars, if that get washed out, can you fix it for a hundred and nine thousand dollars?
No, but you can still keep dumping money into it.
Well, you can still keep dumping money into the other fund as well, and if you combine the two, you'd still have more money in there to deal in an emergency.
Emergency, close the bridge, everybody drives around. Yeah, I know, it's tough.
Everybody's fire insurance on their house will go up.
Yeah.
They won't like that.
Alright, we're out. Yeah. Um, so it's, it's this recommendation, I, I still have this question, so the title of the thing is Drake Hill Road Bridge Expendable Capital Reserve Fund, and then it has parentheses number two, and parentheses number two references the state match.
Yeah, right.
So because of that parentheses number two.
That's what it was intended for, and that's how it was described to the people at town meeting.
I just wanna be really clear about it, so that makes total sense to me to, and I think we're all in agreement that because that money's frozen, because of that parentheses number two, that we need to change that, so how do we wanna change it, do we wanna make a recommendation to just have one fund, a highway slash bridge expendable trust fund? Or do you wanna have two funds, a highway fund and a bridge fund?
Highway.
I'd just do.
Highway bridges, just like parks and rec, just like streets and, and just, if, it's, it's getting to the point where what I'm hearing is a lack of trust in where the money's gonna go, and I know a lot of people don't have that trust right now. Curtis handles his budget and he knows the money's gonna be sitting over there, it's not like we're, we're gonna go do extra things that we don't need to do.
Yeah.
It's easy for me to say, but at town meeting, I know people, certain people will jump up and down, need to know exactly where the money is set for, but we don't know that till, till the problems come up, we're gonna move it if we have to move it anyway. So to play around with these games, little shell games, it, it doesn't do us any good in the long run, because we're just gonna have to do it anyway.
I, I'll make a motion here, okay, to change the title of that highway fund to highway and bridges, okay? And that we recommend moving the Drake Hill Road Bridge Fund because the eighty-twenty grant is defunct right now, um, into that particular fund. Uh, I said.
That I call.
Can I pause right now, is that a change?
Yep. Okay, so Rick Ireland makes a motion to change the name of the Highway Expendable Trust Fund from Highway Expendable Trust Fund to Highway and Bridges Expendable Trust Fund to move the one hundred and nine thousand dollars approximately from the Drake Hill Road Bridge Expendable Capital Reserve Fund to the newly named Highway and Bridge Expendable Trust Fund.
Kelly's second.
And seconded by Kelly. Any further discussion?
I think we beat it to death.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We have four ayes, was this?
Abstained.
Abstained, okay, so five ayes and abstained. And it's a recommendation. There we go. Alright. Cemeteries, the cemetery expendable trust fund, oh, I wanna go back. So we just had the vote about changing the name, the balance is a hundred and ten and a contribution of eight thousand a year, so is our recommendation then to say that eight thousand per year that was for bridges, to increase the highway expendable by the eight thousand? Or just keep highway expendable?
At sixty.
The new funds?
Keep the new highway at sixty and eliminate the eight thousand.
Keep the new highway and bridges at sixty, eliminate.
That's what I would recommend.
General agreement?
Yeah.
Okay. Done. Cemeteries, cemetery expendable trust fund, targeted twenty-five thousand, a balance of twenty-three thousand and a contribution of one thousand per year. Discussion.
Just leave it the way it is?
Yeah.
And that's expendable, right?
Expendable.
Do you have enough to do, you guys have to do?
Yeah. And that is, that's expendable by a vote of the cemetery trust.
Right.
Yeah.
And it has a parentheses and a side note for cemetery upgrades and repairs. This language is good?
Yeah.
Okay, leave it as is. The last one, the revaluation trust fund, target of twenty thousand, a balance of about nineteen thousand and an annual contribution of three thousand five hundred. It has a side note saying, funding for upcoming reevaluation in twenty twenty-five for statistical update.
I would recommend that both the total be increased and that the annual in, uh, contributions be increased, because we just got notified that, um, the revow for this coming year um, is gonna cost us significantly more, I think they mentioned twenty-five thousand. And we don't have enough saved, so we're gonna have to raise some by taxation to make up that difference. And I don't know if Alyssa's gotten the actual number from Jason. That was kind of a guesstimate, is what I understood, so in the future, my, my recommendation in the future, we should up the annual contribution to that fund to probably five or six thousand dollars.
How many properties are there in this town hall?
A lot, believe it or not.
I mean, there's eight hundred and something residents, so there're six, seven hundred properties?
Five hundred is more than that.
Is there one?
They send out over a thousand tax bills, so.
So, 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 so at least a thousand properties.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Sandy can probably tell us pretty easily.
Yeah, I'm sure she could.
Yep. So increase the, uh, the goal to what, thirty?
I would say thirty and probably five or six thousand dollars a year.
We've got five years.
Every five years.
You're gonna make it in five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, keep that under wraps, because if he knows about it, he'll, oh, I can check it up.
I mean, no one wants to be reevaluated, I mean.
No, no.
Well, there's nothing more annoying than someone walking on your land to raise your taxes.
They'll get shot.
But, I mean, it's just part of it, but.
Well, every, everybody gets upset because they, they want their property worth a lot, but they don't wanna be taxed like what they think it's worth.
Theoretically, the higher the valuation, the lower rate, right? As far as broad-based valuation.
In this town here, I, I don't think it affects the, how, the, the residential, because we don't have a lot of business. If we had a lot of businesses, like, let's say Conway, um, because I think they just went through it one year ago. They lowered all the businesses' taxes and increased all the residential because of, there was a differential there.
Yeah, I mean, Walmart's taxes went down, what, sixty thousand?
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of people's taxes went up by three times, so.
They had a lot of explaining to do. The town.
No, I mean, it's.
Okay, so we have a recommendation to increase the target to thirty thousand and increase the annual contribution to six thousand? It's every five years?
Yep.
So that matches up? Any further discussion on that? Okay, so that's our existing listed CIP, are there any other things that should be a new line on CIP?
Well, I, I asked Alyssa if there was anything she could see on the, you know, on the town side of things and, you know.
The, the only thing I can think of, but we're gonna, you, we're gonna do it through the, uh, bridge grant program is Witten Brook Bridge, which is at the bottom of Drake Hill, is gonna get, we're gonna replace that this summer, it's a box culvert type of structure. It's failing, so we're gonna, the road, actually, we're gonna close the road for five days and fix it, um, but, but that's gonna come out of that grant program.
That forty-six.
That forty-six thousand we have sitting there, and so it's actually a great avenue for the town.
Yeah.
And that's a state thing, so it's not coming from any taxation of any citizen of the, of, directly from the town taxpayer, of course, we all pay state taxes, but it's, it's a grant from the state, so that's, that's pretty cool for the town, we can get that fixed.
It's a grant from the state to fix a culvert on a purely town road?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, it's a bridge grant, so we're fixing the bridge, that Witten Brook Bridge, head, head walls and all that, so.
Awesome.
And, uh, so I'm gonna be coming to the selectman to talk about the road closing for like five days, we're gonna have to get, get a procedure, we're gonna do it after school's closed, after school's out, so we know the school buses and all that, so, four or five days, we'll get it done.
It's a good project.
Yeah, just get it, get it done.
The turtles can cross on the knee?
They can. Turtles, snakes, anything that wants, coyotes, turkeys.
All those.
Hand handlers.
Sandy's not here and I asked her to, you know, send along anything, um, and she didn't, but she did talk about, uh, the lack of space for filing.
Well, again, we have a whole building over there that's not being used, and, uh, that could be valuable space in the future.
Yeah.
You know, for storage, for an office, or, or a meeting room, or, or whatever.
How about like, when I was first, my, the road agent office was right through that door.
Mm-hmm.
That was the road agent office, and that's, that really hasn't changed a whole lot, do we have, uh, giving her a little bit of that, I mean, she, you know.
Which room is used?
Right through that door, I mean, that, that was where the road agent and all that was.
Where the meeting room is now?
No, no, that's over here, the, the back, the back door.
The treasurer's using that, using that and we're using it to store town records, yeah.
Alright.
Alright, I mean.
I didn't know if there was room in there to give her a couple filing cabinets.
I mean, I think there'd be room in there to put a couple of filing cabinets, but that would be probably above.
Yeah, so, that might be it out there.
Because I think they were trying to make that a sheriff's office at one time as well.
But it's not gonna cost us any money, so.
Does, I guess my question is, does the clerk need a completely separate space?
I believe state law requires that, depending on.
At least to be locked, I would think.
I think it has to be under her care, custody and control.
So I think that's the hard part.
It's unique the way the, the RSA is.
Yeah, what she's saying is the clerk's office, as it stands right now, is packed to the gills.
It is, there's no question.
And so if they need to be within purely the clerk's purview, this might be somewhat expensive to increase the space.
It might be, but we should, we should review the state law to see what's required.
Yeah.
I mean, there is some room in there for a couple of file cabinets that she can lock, I mean, that I'm certain of, but much more than that, I don't.
Just for future thought, you can always take the plan, you know, the planning board. Just for future thought, you can always take the plant, you know, the planning board room and add that to the clerk's office and then move that into the chapel, make the connection, you know, enclose the connection into the chapel, right? You know what, I mean, just.
Down the road, yes.
You could have the planning board, the select board, everybody meet in the chapel.
In a meeting room.
We're here.
Yeah, we're here.
But, you know, we need to make some serious.
Yeah.
Over there with heat and electricity.
Long term.
You know.
That's something to think about.
Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years down the road, probably.
We need space, we got space, we're trying to figure out what to do with.
Yep. Uh, and then my, uh, or, to bring up to CIP, uh, technology upgrade for the town.
No, no technology.
No technology upgrade. So having meetings in here is nicer. It's also probably more expensive because you gotta heat a bigger room. Um, but to successfully have meetings in here would be nice to have, like, we have the TV screen in the smaller room. It'd be nice to have, uh, the ability to have people come in by Zoom or Google Meet or, uh, those kinds of things. Um, so that is, uh, something to put out there, that I'm putting out there from the planning board end anyways, that, uh. Might cost some money for the town to do.
That, that, that could very well be done.
That's a good idea.
It's just there are people, uh, in the town that wanna rent this building out for all kinds of events, um, and this building isn't set up right now for doing that, for access and security.
Good idea, but I, and, and it's not too difficult to put a lodge.
Oh, no, I mean, no, we could convert this so meetings could be held, yeah, no problem. The only thing you'd have to do is make sure you could move things around enough to be able to have elections and town meeting and, and that sort of thing. And then you could give up that little room in there to.
The clerk.
To the town clerk, tax collector, um, for that, yeah. I mean, it's certainly doable.
Yeah. Costs some money.
I mean, I, I personally have been opposed to renting this hall out for the few times that we do, for the little bit of money we rent it out for, because, um, the building isn't secure when people are here. You know, in order to secure town hall, which is through those doors over there, we need to turn those doors around. We've already checked with Steve Solomon when he was here about emergency doors. That door there and this door here is sufficient to meet safety code.
So what kind of money you looking for? I don't have the numbers. It's, it's.
It's worthwhile to pursue it, I think.
Yeah.
From the talk here.
I think we should be able to have people come in by Zoom, you know, people should be able to come in by Zoom. This is like existing technology that somehow the town doesn't have yet.
You know, you know what you need to do, uh, for this year? Contact the Carroll County Administration down in Austin. They set up a meeting room over in the annex that's beautiful. They have big screens and they do their own video. And it's a Zoom type of arrangement.
That's, that's exactly what I think we should have.
Probably a whole lot less than, than seventy-five dollars a meeting to have it video.
Totally agree. I think we should be having our own.
Um, I go to meetings there on a regular basis for broadband and it's easy to set up. We'd have to have a computer available because it's computer operated.
Yeah.
So we might have to buil, buy a laptop or something.
We've already bought one before.
Well, it's, it's not gonna take a whole lot to, to do.
So does anyone have an idea what that would cost? I mean, are we talking five thousand or ten thousand?
That's why I say.
Probably under, I would think, under five thousand. I mean, what's it gonna cost for a TV screen and an laptop?
Oh, yeah, no.
Right.
I, uh, get a hold of.
Camera speakers, you know.
Door to that front, five. Call me, I'll give you his in-contact information. He's on the committee, he's head of all maintenance at the county. And he's the one that set all that up, and I'm sure he can point you in the right direction. And it's a beautiful setup.
Yep.
And if you wanna check it out, go on YouTube and New County, Carroll County, New Hampshire Commissioners.
Yeah.
And look at the meetings. It's a beautiful setup.
Sounds great.
Cause they had a similar situation where they were meeting in the main administration building, um, and they moved it over there. There's plenty of room, um, and the county attorney got extra space that they were desperately in need of.
Yeah.
To handle, I think it was, um, uh, children, um, and whatnot, cause they needed, uh, privacy.
Yep.
But Bob should be able to turn it on.
Alright, great, thank you.
And I have his contact information.
That's all I have for CIP. Does anyone have anything else? Hearing none?
Move to attorney.
Thank you.
Good second round.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Alright.
Motion carried.